We'll call the Tuesday, October 18th, 2011, Meeting of the Iredell County Board of Commissioners to Order. And first on the agenda, I'll ask Commissioner Renee Griffith to lead us in our invocation, please.
Let us pray. Heavenly Father, we thank you for this country that we live in and the freedoms that we enjoy. Lord, we just pray that you give us wisdom tonight as we hear each item and make decisions that would best reflect the needs of the citizens and that we would be wise stewards of the money that you have entrusted to us. Lord, we pray that you protect the men and women who protect us all over this country and who are on foreign lands tonight. We do again thank you for the freedom that we enjoy and the privilege to serve in this position. We ask all these things in your son's name. Amen.
Join us in the pledge of allegiance to the flag of our country.
Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Smith, are there any adjustments coming from you or the staff?
Ms. Chairman, I have no adjustments.
Okay. Any adjustments from any member of the board? Hearing none, the floor is open for a motion to adopt this agenda.
Motion to approve the agenda is presented.
Motion to adopt by Vice Chairman Norman. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carried unanimously. We'll move directly this evening to appointments before the board. And once again, we're happy to have David Swan with us, Crossroads Behavioral Healthcare Area Director and CEO. Mr. Swan, welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good to be with you all also tonight. I come to you to give, to present to you one of the next steps in the process that we began nearly seven months ago, if you can believe that, hard to believe it's been that long, to accomplish a couple of things. One is to comply with North Carolina general statutes that were enacted this summer to merge local management entities to form larger regions. And number two, also, to add a book of business, which is a Medicaid health plan, to our work. We have an implementation plan that I have in my portfolio. I didn't bring it up because I didn't need to do any weightlifting tonight, but it has 684 steps. And one of those steps is this meeting this evening, and there are lots of other steps that have either been done or in the process of being done all the way through next December of 2012. I'll just give you some idea of what we're looking at this evening. I know you have an attached piece of work that we put together that's called an intent to merge document that's been drafted by our legal team. This actually encompasses a number of governance items, and we started putting this product together at the joint board retreat that was held on Saturday, August 20th, amongst all three of the boards of mental health programs encompassing the Crossroads Program, the Mental Health Partners Program, and the Pathways Program. And of course, as you might recall, that's eight counties. That's Iredell, Surrey, and Yadkin, Burke and Catawba, Gaston, Lincoln, and Cleveland Counties. On August 20th, we met. Those boards then took action on six of the governance items, which also appear in this document. And then each of those boards respectively came back to their own boards of mental health and then took official action on each of those six items. So what we have for you this evening comes as a recommendation from our board of directors, and it is an intent to merge in order to form a new organization next July 1st, and then to accomplish the Medicaid health plan that I've mentioned to you many times that would actually launch on January 1, 2013. So that's what I have for you tonight. I'll pause and see if the chairman wants me to entertain any questions.
Mr. Swan, forgive me. I'm gonna hand this copy to Mr. Pope. He had a few notes written in the margins. To be honest with you, these are questions I probably should have answered for him, but when you sit on these boards for a while, you, I don't think it's a bad thing, but I begin to think like you people, and I know what these terms are. And I think he had some questions, so I'm gonna give him a minute to review that.
Okay.
And in his legal mind, maybe he can bring something to light that the uneducated would not, would not grasp.
May I just go ahead?
Yes, sir. Go right ahead.
One of the questions I had, Mr. Swan, is whether the, it says the chair of the merged entities, Consumer and Finance Advisory Committee, shall be a member of the board by virtue of their position. Is that person going to be voting or not, or ex officio?
The intent is for that person to be a voting member.
Okay. It's my understanding that the Pathways is going to be the surviving entity and that it is assuming all of the liabilities of all of the entities that are being merged into it.
That is correct. All of the liabilities and assets would be, would be all pulled together in that surviving entity. We're in the process of rebranding and renaming that surviving entity also, so it's gonna have a whole new identity. But really, that surviving entity is the tax ID number that we didn't want to have to go through that process over again.
I guess the question about that, then, is do you feel that you've quantified those liabilities? Do you know what you're assuming?
Yes. We have, and we've got all those put together. I'll say, though, that legally, there are a couple of things that are a part of Crossroads that we are having a difficult time quantifying because it's outstanding litigation that has not been settled yet. And so it's, as you know, hard, hard to do that, but there's...
Do you feel that that litigation is, that you're adequately insured as to that, or are you having to defend those without insurance?
We are insured on one of those cases. We are not insured on the other.
But you, but you got a handle on that, didn't you?
We got a handle on it.
Paragraph number six said, "Management will determine which functions will best be handled by centralized hubs." And I didn't, "Management of what?"
That, I think the intent there would be the management staff would determine which functions and services can be distributed across these eight counties in the hubs and which functions and services need to be centralized.
Some of my questions were somewhat stylistic. You use, the term MCO director is, is used, and that's not defined. What does that mean?
Managed Care Organization Director. It's actually defined in the new statutes, and that's probably where it came from, but it probably should have been defined in this document. You're correct.
On page four, top of the page, and I guess it's eight, eight C, I don't know if you have this doc, do you have this document in front of you? There is a reference to the personal property that will be included, but it doesn't, doesn't include software or intangible or intellectual properties. Is that, I assume that's to be transferred in such things as patient records and...
Yes.
Phone numbers and...
Yes.
Better ID, domain name, and all those intellectual...
All of those things would go under the new organization. That's correct.
I assume the state approval that is required pursuant to paragraph 12 is the only contingency?
Yes, that is the only one, but that has been resolved. The state has given us the green light back on sometime in July, I forgot the date, but it was, that was actually done back in the summer. That was, you know, through an application process that we had to submit to demonstrate that we could operate a managed care organization.
So there are no contingencies now?
No contingencies.
Have the other counties approved the resolution?
In our area, the Yadkin and Surrey Counties have approved it already, and in the Mental Health Partners area, both Catawba and Burke have approved it, and in the Pathways area, Lincoln County has approved it. Cleveland and Gaston Counties are taking action this week. Maybe tonight, in fact.
The reason I asked the question about the liabilities, of course, is what I read in the paper about the, our sister organization up north of here, and it looks like some counties are going to have to assume some unbudgeted liabilities.
Yes.
Guess I'm seeking some kind of assurance that we're not having to do that.
Yes, you actually are protected in this environment. That is pursuant to chapter 160A of the general statutes, and so that bound those five counties to those liabilities and obligations. And in this, this is, this is how, this is how the 122C statutes suggest counties be organized to manage mental health care. And expressly in the legislation this summer, it gave counties protection from, from the liability, especially because we would be managing and at risk for Medicaid money, at full risk for it. So this is, these are services people would need that are entitled to those services, and we would get a fixed amount of money. In other words, you push that risk down from the state and the federal government, and we manage that here. That's the reason why we had to get bigger, because it's like running an insurance company. This is a health plan, and once you collect all of your revenue and you have your receipts, then you're responsible for making sure that the enrollees of that plan, that health plan, have the health care that they need. And so we would have a risk pool, and the counties are shielded under the statute. I wish I had have brought the citation for that statute. I can actually email that to you tomorrow, and you could see where that is.
If you don't mind, I'd appreciate that.
That was actually something that the North Carolina County Commission Association wanted to get in there, and they started working on that in April. And of course, we supported that, and that was one of those ways it helped.
That's all the questions I have, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, that's all for Mr. Pope. Anybody else have any questions? I will say this, Mr. Swan, and in an earlier board meeting, I brought up the idea about liability insurance, and Mr. Pope had actually prompted that question in my mind.
Yes.
Mr. Pope, the plan now, as I understand it, and you correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Swan, is that there will be a plan presented back to our board to show how the insurance will be phased in, so there will be a continuation of, nonstop continuation of insurance up until the dissolution of the old LE, LME?
You got it.
And, and the new organization, so there's gonna be an overlap there.
Yes, that actually is correct. We have, we have engaged our insurance companies, our liability and professional liability companies. All three organizations use, use the same one, so that was really easy for us to do, to get everybody together at the same table. They have made some recommendations to us that we're gonna bring back to our board for extending that coverage and making sure that we have that. In the, in the case that we are not insured for, it was a specific exclusion for that liability.
Okay. So any other questions? All right, hearing none, I'm gonna offer a motion that we approve this plan for, document for intent to merge, and authorize myself to sign. Any discussion on that motion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Swan.
Mr. Chairman, can I ask one question? I have two originals with me with the other county's signatures on it. If I may, ask you to look at these, and at the break, if you would entertain a signature that I could take it with me, then I would be able to do that.
It, I tell you what, it won't take but a second. Just, just bring them on around, I'll sign them right here, and you can, you can be on your way.
We know you're busy in here today. Good luck, buddy. I know, I know it's a headache, what you're doing.
Appreciate your thoughts, Mr. Swan. I feel I may be a little too busy. I'll sit. Thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you all for that.
matters, and Mr. Smith, I'll let you take over for a moment.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The first item is memo number two, and this is a request from ICATS and the Sheriff's Office for the conversion of three sheriff's vehicles and four ICATS vehicles to propane. And Ben Garrison and Mike Phillips are here to make the presentation.
Thank you. Several meetings ago, Mike and I came before you about an ORA grant that was through the NC State University to convert some of our vehicles from gasoline to propane fuel. There was four, there were four ICATS vehicles and three sheriff's vehicles named in this, this grant. Since that time, we received word from NC State that we were approved with, for the project, and the timeline on this project remains the same. It's October 1st through December 30th, and there, there will be no extensions on that, that period of time. One thing that has come up that has been of concern to me, and I have tried to investigate it, is the idea of sole sourcing. Sole sourcing makes sense to us, and that the sheriff's department has vehicles with this equipment on it. The garage has been trained in the use, in how to install that equipment and calibrate the equipment, and the fueling sites are in place. So sole sourcing made a lot of sense to us, but when we tried to pursue it through NC State, I actually wrote a letter requesting it, and, and it was denied. They were saying that they, as the grantor, or one of the sub recipients could not give us the sole sourcing ability. So where we are with this now is what I would like to do is ask Mike Phillips, Captain Phillips, to contact the Department of Energy directly to see if we can get a sole source. Then if we, if we're not able to get a sole source, then ask our purchasing department to, to do the procurement so that we are meeting the ORA guidelines. My, my fear is that if we don't get permission to sole source, and we do it, and somewhere along the line, I'm afraid it could come back to bite us, that if we have not followed the ORA regulations, and somebody down the road does an audit, and they come back and say, "What were your reasons for sole sourcing?", and they don't like our reasons, then it could come back to bite us. So I want to make sure that we're not doing anything that could do that. Plus, if we, if we can't do that, then I would say that we don't accept the, the grant application or do not accept the funds. So in order to start the process, though, we do need the commissioners to approve the award so that we can move forward. I'll be happy to...
Any questions? Mr. Garrison?
I guess not. Thanks, sir.
Floor is open for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move for approval of budget amendment number 14 to accept an ARR A grant in the amount of $36,325 from the NCSU Alternative Fuel Advanced Vehicle Technology Project to convert three sheriff's departments and four ICATS vehicles to propane fuel and approve expenditure of these funds.
Okay. Motion for approval from Mr. Mitchell. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Captain Phillips has the next two, which are memo three and four. Three is a request for a sole source contract, and the, and memo four is for the acceptance of 2011 Governor's Highway Safety Program Grant.
Good evening. You may recall, I was here several weeks ago asking for a budget amendment to convert 13 patrol vehicles to propane. This is, this 13 is not included in the grant we were just discussing. What we're asking for tonight in, in this situation is a sole source procurement for those conversion kits, to purchase the PRIN system, which is what we already have on the original 13 cars. Basically, for the same reason Mr. Ben just said, because we already have that infrastructure in place, our people are trained for the installation and the maintenance of those systems, and those systems are working out great for us. I contacted our finance department this week to get some numbers. Based on the propane fuel that we pumped during this period of time, as opposed to what gasoline would have cost, in July, we pumped 4,700, we, we pumped $4,793 worth of propane. If we'd have pumped that same amount of gas, we would have spent $8,906. In August, we pumped $2,191. If we'd have purchased the same amount of gas, it would have cost $3,870. In September, we pumped $1,802 worth of propane. It would have cost $3,003 in gas. We're seeing right about where we thought we were going to be, right around 40, 45% difference in those costs. So based on these past three months, we think we're headed in the right direction with this program.
Can you say?
And that's on how many vehicles?
13.
No, no, that you are, that you're seeing those savings of $2,000 to $4,000 a month?
That is from the 13 that we've already done, that we did through the grant last year. So what, what we've done is we've already converted 13. They're in operation now. We're going to convert 13 more, and that's what we're asking the sole source for. Actually, I would like to have a sole source for any future purchases as well, but I'm not sure, I don't know if we can do it that way or not, so.
But it, but it costs six, it says upfront cost is $66,000 to retrofit 13 vehicles?
We paid 4,500, we paid $4,500 a unit for the conversion kit. Now, we also had some training expenses in those first 13. Those were paid for through the grant. Now, the new systems that we're purchasing, which is, I think, what you're talking about, the 66,000?
Right.
That will be not only for the conversion kits, but it will also be to prepare the site for the fueling station, a computer, and all the wiring for that. It may not be that much. I just requested that much, just to make sure we, we covered everything.
Yeah, 43.75 a piece, times 13. That's around, what, 56, 7,000? So you're figuring around 8,000 to 9,000 to get the sites ready to pump?
Correct.
Have you noticed any adverse effect of the fuel on the performance of the cars or anything?
Basically, what we've noticed is that the performance has actually increased because we're actually running a higher octane fuel.
Okay. All right. Any other questions? If not, floor is open for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'll, I'll make the motion to approve it. I, I just, just ran some numbers real quick. If this, if the fueling station is already there, it looks like, you know, you're, you're looking at about a one-year payback.
Which is pretty good.
So this is, this makes sense. Anything under a three-year payback is usually a pretty good deal. And, and clearly, the reason why they're doing the grants is to help you get the stations in, because that's, you know, that's the, that's, that's the real long, long pole in the tent, so to speak.
Correct.
Okay, so I'll make the motion that, that we approve it.
Okay. Motion for approval from Mr. Robertson. Any discussion on the motion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
My second item is request to accept the 2011 Governor's Highway Safety Program Grant. This is be the third year of this grant, the third and final year of this grant. This is the traffic safety grant. The officers mainly work in the south end, in the Brawley School Road area, conducting traffic and checkpoints, DWI checkpoints, driver's license checkpoints, and also safety belt and child restraint checkpoints.
Any questions? If not, is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve from Vice Chairman Norman. All in favor say aye.
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 All opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you. Phil?
The next two items we have are requests for surplus declarations, and Dean Lael, our purchasing agent, will make both of those.
Good evening. As Mr. Smith said, I do have two requests for surplus declarations and the authorization to be able to transfer this property. The first is for an animal control freezer. This freezer's been used to store carcasses for animals that have been destroyed. It's been in place in the old animal control facility since 1993. It is an old freezer. I've done a market survey, and they do not return very well in market, even for a cafeteria grade. This being used to store carcasses has even less value. We do have an offer from Alexander County. They're in bad need of one. They don't have much, many funds, just like the rest of us, and they're requesting that we might sell that to them for $500. They will come, remove it, dismantle it, remove it, and haul it at their expense. So the request is declaration of the item to be surplus and authorization for me to sell it to Alexander County.
Any questions? I assume they're gonna keep animal carcasses in this thing?
Yes, sir.
Floor is open for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we declare the freezer surplus.
Okay. Motion to approve the request to declare it surplus and sell it to Alexander County for $500. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you. The second item is regarding, is regarding two EMS stretchers. These stretchers have been removed from service. They're no longer viable for service on our ambulances for safe use for public use. Mitchell College has their EMT program, and they are needing new stretchers for that program. These can be used to, to help the EMTs learn how to remove and, you know, whatever they do with stretchers. Their request is that we might transfer two of those, and basically, this would, the consideration for this would be their promise to keep these in public use in the instruction in this program. So request here is to declare these two stretchers surplus and that I'd be able to transfer to them free of charge.
Why were they to, somewhat ironic statement. We can't use them in the ambulances, so there's something wrong, yet, oh, they're good enough to teach students because they're good. Are they bad or are they good? I mean, what's, what's going on here?
The stretchers have a reasonable life. Basically, our, our point is the liability that we absorb by keeping them... Basically, our point is the liability that we absorb by keeping them beyond that life. They may still be good to use for them to practice getting them in and out of ambulances, but they're not good for hauling a person who's in dire need of emergency care.
And how is that threshold of, of acceptability? Who establishes this?
I believe in this case, the state EMS department does, but I don't know for sure. I have to go with the recommendation that our EMS director gives me. And these have been replaced, by the way, by new Ferno stretchers.
So they already, they already have the replacements in?
Yes, sir. They were approved in this year's, this current year's budget.
They're transferring them over, there's no liability, right?
No liability, no, sir.
I'd just like to know how we go, how we go about determining the threshold of, you know, if, if, I know for, for some vehicles, there's a certain amount, you know, when the maintenance costs get to a certain amount per year, given a set number of miles or whatever, you make the determination that, that it's actually cheaper just to go ahead and get a new vehicle as opposed to maintaining an old one. You know, I don't want to micromanage too much here, but we're, we're in lean times. I'd like for us to take a visit, and let's make sure that we're, that we have good, in the industry term, you call it retirement criteria. Go ahead. Mr. Jackson's going to answer the question. Curious as to what the retirement criteria?
I can't really speak to the threshold. What I can tell you is, the purchase of the new stretchers was brought about because EMS has seen such a huge increase in patient weights.
Okay.
And that was one of the factors we looked at in terms of an injury prevention program. It's not just the physical fitness of the employees, it's also the equipment and the training and et cetera. So that was one of the items, or a number of new items, when we talk about stretchers that were purchased. Some of these stretchers were traded in, so there was trade-in value. These two in particular, there was a need at Mitchell Community College. They don't always have up-to-date equipment. So the stretchers that we would be passing along to them aren't as heavy-duty as our new stretchers, but they're still functional and provide the students, you know, opportunity to operate a, a modern stretcher, if you will. So that's, that's part of the reason.
Okay. So really, I mean, what drove, what drove this whole process was the fact that we've had to kind of raise the standards for, for what sort of load those stretchers are going to carry?
Right.
And then, then, so we just had some extra stretchers. Okay. All right, good enough. So there wasn't anything wrong with them?
Well, and we do have a maintenance company that comes in and performs stretcher maintenance, preventive maintenance, on a regular basis. So they may have made some recommendations in terms of life of these stretchers, but that's a question I'll have to ask David Klor.
Okay. We're good.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Not, floor is open for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we declare the stretchers surplus and donate to Mitchell College.
All right, sir. Motion for approval for this request from Vice Chairman Norman. All in favor say aye.
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 All opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman, I'm going to turn the next eight items over to Donna Campbell and Susan Johnson from the, from the Health Department.
Good evening. We do have several items, and I'm going to be covering the majority, but Susan will be covering K and L. We have a request, we have a request from the Health Department to accept an amendment to receive and use up to twelve thousand dollars of additional aid to county immunization funds. The state has notified us that we will receive up to twelve thousand dollars of funds that can be only used for equipment and medical supplies related to immunizations. We cannot use it for vaccine, vaccinations. But the deadline for using this is December thirty-first. So we wanted to go ahead and bring it to you to, to get your approval to accept that amendment. And this would be state funds and no ongoing county dollars.
Okay. I was going to say, so what you're saying is, is they're going to give us twelve thousand dollars, so let's go ahead and spend the twelve thousand dollars now, and we should get reimbursed?
No. They're going to, they're going to send us the money, and we're not going to spend it till we get it. But they don't have a definite amount yet that they're going to send us. So it'll be up to twelve thousand dollars. We won't spend it till we get it, but it has to be spent by December thirty-first.
So we're just authorizing you to spend it if you get it?
Yes. And we, if we don't get the full twelve thousand, then we'll only spend up to the amount that they give us. But we didn't want to miss the opportunity because our board doesn't meet again until December, and then we'd have to bring it to the commissioners. So we thought we would not have time to get that through all the hoops.
Okay. You satisfied my county commissioner question. Now I'm going to ask you a, this coming from the state?
Yes.
I'm going to ask you a state taxpayer question. Just because they tell you that you have twelve thousand dollars that you can spend, as a taxpayer of the state, I don't want you to spend it just because you can. Is, is there twelve thousand dollars worth of genuine needs in?
There are. And I, and I think, you know, our stance and our board's stance has been if you only spend it if you need it. And we have aging vaccine freezers, which hold very, very expensive vaccine, and that would replace those. We've got, instead of using county funds to replace those. Also, we have a Mooresville immunization computer that desperately needs to be upgraded, and then we would use the rest of it to pay for medical immunization-related supplies, which we would be purchasing anyway.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions? If not, floor is open for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move for approval of budget amendment number fifteen.
Okay. Motion for approval from Mr. Mitchell. All in favor of that motion say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
The next item is a request for approval for a budget amendment to allow us to use one hundred percent Med Max only, no county funds, to purchase an interface between the county Munus software and our patient accounting software. This will allow us to download accounts receivable data directly in Munus, and we're having to double entry, do double entry right now, and this will save us from having to do double entry. What we're asking for is a one-time licensing and implementation cost of seventy-five hundred, and then there's going to be ongoing annual cost of at least nine thousand nine hundred and fifteen dollars. That would be Med Max dollars. This is a unique interface that, that we're asking them to create. We're asking Insight to create, to interface with the county software.
Okay. Any questions?
Do you foresee that we'll save annually nine thousand nine hundred and fifteen dollars, which will be our ongoing payment every year? Do you foresee that we will save that in?
It's very hard to predict at this time. What it's, what's happening is that when the county process switched over, we had a work group of finance and the Health Department staff in June and July, trying to figure out how are we going to do this without having to double entry? Because it was meaning that our staff had to complete their, the whole process and close out their cash door before the, before the appointments were done. And so every day, we were going to have a, you know, a conflict that wasn't easily resolvable. And so we were going to have to look at overtime, and then it still was going to conflict when we had to close, get our cash doors closed out, when we still had patients in the building. So this seems like the most reasonable solution, and being able to use the Med Max funds is very appropriate for this. And so I don't have a specific answer, but it was the best solution that we could come up with.
Will we be able to use Med Max funds next year to, to pay for the annual maintenance?
Yes.
Okay. Any other question? Not, floor is open for a motion.
Motion to approve budget amendment number sixteen.
Motion for approval from Vice Chairman Norman. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Our, our next item is, we've been also informed again, but without a specific number amount yet, that we are going to receive a one-time A R A money to pay for required infection control training. And we've tried to find out from the state exactly how much money we will receive, and we've been told somewhere between one thousand and twenty-five hundred dollars. So what we're going to request is a budget amendment, number seventeen, for an A R A infection control training funds in the, in the amount of the twenty-five hundred dollars. If we do not receive the twenty-five hundred dollars, then we will only spend up to the amount that we receive from the state, not to, I mean, from the A R A funds, not to exceed twenty-five hundred dollars. And this will be to train staff in infection control for required, legally required, it's a legal requirement. Sorry.
Steve, if you don't say something, I will. This is what your stimulus package is paying for. These are what you, this is stimulus funds. These are the roads and bridges and tunnels and all the stuff that it's supposed to be paying for. That's how this is being funded.
Sometimes you're better off saying nothing. I just, I don't mind you asking, Ms. Campbell, but this is why Keynesian economics do not work. John Maynard Keynes was a fool.
Okay. Any questions? All right. Floor is open for a motion.
Motion to approve budget amendment number seventeen.
Okay. Motion for approval. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
Motion carries three, two. Okay.
Our next item is a request to purchase a computer data backup and recovery device using one hundred, again, one hundred percent Med Max funds and no county funds. The device we want to purchase will assure that we're in compliance with HIPAA. We will do, it will protect our information, it will back it up, and will have it stored off-site. And this would be a one-time hardware cost of nine thousand three hundred and sixty-five dollars and an ongoing support cost of eighteen hundred dollars per year paid for with Med Max funds.
Okay. Any questions?
Is there a point that the Med Max funds could end?
Yes.
And so if those funds end, then these annual support and maintenance costs we will incur?
Right.
And, and, and that's the trouble with when you hear about them saying that they're going to cut Medicaid funding. One of the ways that they do it is they cut the Medicaid Max funds that we're on, if they cut them, we're, we're on the hook for all these expenses. So that's, that's kind of the proverbial rock and a hard place that, that we get, that we get put in.
Yeah. The Medicaid cuts don't actually decrease the Medicaid cost.
No, I'm saying that was one of the things that was discussed this year.
It would be a concern, but at this point, those are federal dollars, and it, we get sixty cents on the dollar. And when they come around and say, we're going to do a Medicaid rate cut, that still doesn't take away from what our costs are. So we still get sixty cents on the dollar between, the gap between what our fee is and what our actual costs are. So, so far, that's not been on the chopping block.
How are we currently backing up our data?
We're saving it to another server that's in the same room. So if there's a fire, it will destroy our data. We had intended to send it to the Mooresville server, but the line between states will, Mooresville will not accommodate the information flow. And so this was a alternative versus an upgrade on that line or going into, and I'm not an IT person, but a sans or, or something much more complex. This is a unit that has hard drives that plug in and out, and you take them and lock them in the vault.
It was brought out at our meeting last week, that with, with no backup at all, that if they have a fire or a major catastrophe, we lose all records of everyone over there. So this is something we should have had a long time ago, and it's going to be done in-house.
And the annual cost is eighteen hundred dollars per year? Okay.
Okay. Any questions? Floor is open for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move for approval of budget amendment number eighteen.
Motion for approval from Mr. Mitchell. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Our next item is our annual write-offs. We bring to the Board of Health and then to the commissioners each year write-offs, and these are accounts that have had no activity since June thirtieth, two thousand and eight, and we're asking for approval to write off uncollected patient accounts in the amount of thirty-three thousand five hundred and seventy-one dollars and eighty-one cents. I'd be glad to answer any questions you might have.
If you have a private pay patient who does not pay, and we write off that amount, if they come back to the Health Department, do, are, are you required to provide services to that individual?
If it's an emergency service, then we would need to provide that. We do have patient contracts, and I think you probably remember, we also send bills out at thirty, sixty, ninety days. And then if you have a bill greater than fifty dollars and have a valid social security number, then we turn it over to the debt set-off program, in which they take from the, their state tax refunds. But if they come back in, there's a whole procedure lined up in our fee policy on how they reinstate charges and how they work with people on payment plans. And we also have a billing group that is working on debt collection improvements and looking at the numbers continually with that.
Have you run any data on how much of this money is from people who do not have a valid social security number?
I do not have it broken out like that. I have it broken out by private pay and Medicaid.
Okay. Any other questions? Floor is open for a motion.
Hold on. Before we vote on that, just because if, if folks are watching, they're, I know the answer, but I'm going to, I'm going to ask the question so that you can answer it. If you find that someone has an invalid or fraudulent social security number, are you allowed to turn them in?
No.
You are not allowed to turn them in. Is that a county, county commissioner rule, or is that a federal rule?
I'm understanding it's a federal rule.
That is correct. Okay. All right. We'll vote.
All right. Floor is open for a motion.
Motion to approve, Mr. Chairman.
Motion to approve from Vice Chairman Norman. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Susan Johnson, Director of Nursing, is going to handle the next two items, and then I'll handle the last item. The next item is a request to approve revised fee schedule for clinical services. The Health Department recently received updated information from our Medicaid cost study for the fiscal year two thousand nine, two thousand ten, with instructions that we must adjust our current fees to be at the Medicaid reimbursement rate or at the estimated cost, whichever is higher, in order to collect the maximum amount of those Medicaid maximization or settlement funds that you were talking about a minute ago. This change that is being required because of changes with the federal Medicaid requirements. In the past, when the state did our annual cost settlement study, they averaged the cost settlement across the counties, beginning in the fiscal year two thousand twelve, two thousand thirteen. However, the cost settlement's going to be specific to our county. And so because of that, we had to look at our fee schedule, and we need to make, in some cases, some adjustments. The attached fee schedule that you should have shows the current fees and the proposed fees and the amount of change or increase in the fees and the amount of change or increase in these fees. And when we looked at the impact that this would create, most of the fees, as you'll see, the majority of them are actually okay, and we're not changing them. But for a few, we do need to make some adjustments in order to make sure that we get the maximum amount of Medicaid settlement funds. The negative impact, I looked at what impact this might have on our patients, and since the majority of our patients are Medicaid, have Medicaid coverage, or are self-pay and they slide to zero or near zero, the impact should be very minimal on our patients. And that is one thing that we give strong consideration to in public health. Even though some of these fee increases seem significant, I believe that the potential negative impact of these fee increases does not, in my opinion, outweigh the overall positive impact of approving this, these revised fees and helping us to assure that we'll get the maximum Medicaid settlement funds. So I would ask for your approval of these revised fees. We did have discussion at our Board of Health meeting last week, and they approved these fees as well.
So Ms. Johnson, if we, if we don't maximize our revenues on the front end, then some of the things that you folks come and ask us for later will be paid for out of county funds rather than what Medicaid money you have left. Is that?
Right. Or the Medicaid Max funds that we receive on the back end. That's correct.
All right. Any other questions?
Mr. Chairman, at our board meeting we met last week, we talked on this issue at length, and it was really discussed. What has happened, the state has sent someone in and audited our figure. And there's some medical people on our board, one's a medical doctor and one's a dentist, and they both said that this is one of those things where Medicaid says, "I got you." We either accept raising these fees and collect it from Medicaid, or next May, when we're sitting up here doing a budget, we got to find $600,000. That's what it amounts to. And the doctor on there said, you know, said, "One of these fees on here, Medicaid says that they're going to pay $65." He said, "They'd be better off giving everyone a voucher, let them have some type of ear procedure for $25, go to their doctor and get it done, the doctor will be glad to do it." But he said, "They've got us on this. We got no choice. If we stand up and say, 'No, we're not going to raise these fees,' we're going to be standing alone. And it's going, it's going to hurt our taxpayers next May." So we had no choice but to approve this, and it was unanimous vote the other night.
Okay. All right. Any other questions? Floor's open for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move for approval.
Motion for approval from Mr. Mitchell. Any discussion? Not all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Can I follow with one question? Back when I was on the Board of Health with you, you know, occasionally, we went through and did a sanity check with the fee schedule to make sure that it covered the costs so that the taxpayers weren't having to subsidize, or we could minimize their subsidy, so to speak, to the department. Yet this outsider auditor came in, and they found, you know, a fair number of items. Is there any sort of ongoing routine or something so that we can do a, so that we can do a check to make sure that the fee, that the fee schedule stays current, that it not get too far behind? And I understand it's probably too burdensome of an effort to do annually, but, you know, maybe do one segment annually or a certain percentage of your fees to review them. You know, can y'all tell me what sort of measures we have to keep that current?
I actually do look at the fees annually, and we use a fee analyzer. And I don't know if you remember us talking about that, but that's a rather large book that we get that looks at the usual fees for this, or the ZIP codes starting with 286. And we generally have tried to follow and make sure that our fees were at least set above the Medicaid rate so that when we billed, we collected the maximum amount of Medicaid reimbursement. But also, we tried to follow like the 60th percentile of that. But what happened here is that the Medicaid cost study people come in, and they do this cost study, but we don't know what formulas they use to figure costs. And we've asked them for that information, but we haven't gotten it. And so this time, when they gave us our Medicaid cost study settlement information, they actually gave us much more detail. And so we were able to make these adjustments in our fee schedules to better reflect our cost. Like you said, it is very, would be very time-consuming to spend time to analyze the cost for each CPT code. And even if we did that, if we didn't use the same formula that they did, we're not going to be at the place they want us to be. So we somewhat rely on them for that information.
Okay.
And this was driven by a federal change before, when they averaged across the entire state, then we just got a portion of the Medicaid cost and reimbursement. And now they're making each county look at it individually, and that's where the big change is in the information level we've gotten. And they look at all of the information. We send them the voluminous numbers of reports that we send, and they also look at the county's indirect cost report, which includes all the, you know, the county's costs, and they merge that together and somehow apply it to the individual CPT code. So it's a very in-depth process, and we're still waiting for additional information on it.
Having each county judged individually is a whole lot better than so-called getting us lumped in on average, because it seems like every, every time we do that with a state program, we always end up on the losing end, so.
We'll be able to recoup 60 cents on the dollar of our actual cost.
Cost, right. Okay. Thank you.
Okay.
We already voted. Sorry about that.
That's fine. What do you got next?
Number 13. Okay.
Okay.
In March of 2011, the state changed the manner in which it administers our child service coordination and maternity care coordination programs. And as a result, we need to sign a contract with Access Care, which is a community care of North Carolina network. And through this contract, we will receive our monthly payments for the care management services that we provide to the clients in these programs. The term of this agreement is for a period of 21 months. They wanted to finish out this fiscal, this year and then complete the next fiscal year as well. And since the term of the contract is more than 12 months, I believe our county ordinance requires that we get your approval to enter into a contract that's in more than 12 months.
Okay. Any questions? All right. Hearing none, the floor's open for a motion.
Motion to approve, Mr. Chairman.
Motion to approve, Vice Chairman Norman. All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
The last item we have is a request for approval of a Medicare agreement and a required letter. We do give flu shots and pneumonia shots for Medicare clients. And the Medicare and Medicaid Services Center has taken on a contract with a new Medicare administrative contractor, and they're requiring all of us to revalidate our agreements with them. And this will be an indefinite agreement. It will last until they tell us again that they've changed their provider, their administrative contractor. And they've also asked that we send a letter, you should have gotten a copy of the letter, that says we will be legally and financially responsible in the event that there's an outstanding debt owed by Iredell County to the Centers for Medicare and Medicaid Services. And we had Mr. Pope look at this, and he gave us some additional wording that we needed to add to the letter. So I've incorporated his recommendations into the letter. We are not aware of an instance where we've ever had to pay back for Medicare. And so we're not aware of any situation where that might come up, other than if they, somebody else, somebody had a service and they had already received that service, maybe from another provider, and we were billing at the same time. But like I said, we've not ever had that circumstance occur. So we ask for permission to revalidate our Medicare agreement, which is the indefinite, for an indefinite period of time, and to also sign the letter.
Okay. Any questions? Not. Floor's open for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, a move for approval.
Motion for approval from Mr. Mitchell. All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Ms. Camel, I want to thank you, ladies. I have thus much respect. And my mother, who's on her deathbed, chastised me this weekend for calling somebody a fool. He's, I won't mention him by name, but he holds the highest office in the land. But probably shouldn't have done that in an open meeting, but I just get frustrated for, for someone to believe that you can borrow money from one group of people or tax one group of people and give it to someone else. And that will bring about economic prosperity, to believe you can stand in the bucket, grab it by the handles, and pick yourself up. It is utterly insane. That's no reflection on you folks. You have a job to do, and I beg your forgiveness for my outbursts sometimes. I just get a little frustrated. Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay. We'll move, move it on here.
The next item we have is a request from the Highway Patrol and our E-Com Department, David Martin, for the waiver of all zoning and building permit fees associated with construction of a Viper tower on Fox Mountain.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Commissioner. Have with me this afternoon, Mr. Dick Wooten. Mr. Wooten is the Western Viper Supervisor for North Carolina Highway Patrol, and they have sent a request wanting to be relieved of the fees for the zoning and building permits for the Viper tower that be constructed on Fox Mountain. And Mr. Wooten is here if you have any questions of him regarding this.
Any questions, Mr. Smith, for this gentleman? We're glad to have you with us, sir. Appreciate you coming. Okay. All right. No questions? Floor's open for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I make the motion that we approve the waiver of all zoning and building permit fees associated with the construction of the Fox Mountain Viper site. And the reason we're doing that is because y'all are agreeing to let us use it.
Yes, sir.
After it's built.
Okay. I'm sorry, Mr. Robertson, is that a motion?
Sorry. Yeah, I thought that was a motion.
Okay. May have been. I was distracted. Okay. Motion for Mr. Robertson for approval. Any discussion? Not all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you for coming, sir. Okay.
Mr. Chairman, next item I have is a request to award a sole-source vendor purchase order for upgrading our current ESI CAD system to a version 12 Sequel-based CAD system. This will give us the ability to not only expand additional consoles, it will also give us the ability to add applications that some of the user agencies are requesting. So we're here this afternoon. I have Mr. Jerry Williams and his colleagues with me from ESI. If you have any questions of them. ESI was the vendor that put in the original CAD, and just being an upgrade, they would be the only vendor that would be able to supply this upgrade. So he's here if you have any questions of either he or I.
What's his name again, Mr.?
Jerry Williams.
Jerry Williams, okay. Do you have any questions, these gentlemen?
Mr. Martin, one for you. How about a future expansion would allow you to expand in the future? Just expand the system in the future?
Yes, sir. It will allow us to expand that additional consoles. Currently, we can't because the license, we can't get the license for the version that's in.
Mr. Williams, thank you for coming from Georgia. I appreciate it. Will the new system be able to do any mobile CAD?
The upgrade that's, and the feature description has been available, I think everybody was provided with that. Our CAD has always had the ability to interface with mobile data. It does not include that in this particular quote. We weren't asked to do that. Our product is an open-ended product that, and we've always worked with our WebEOC product, our WebFusion product, and our CAD product, that we will interface with anybody. And we build the code so that it's, we have an open API, and the only time that we've ever run into an incident is the other company did not want to interface with us. So we have interfaced with the Motorola PMDC mobile data system, although most people will tell you that that is kind of next gen, last gen, and they're looking toward the future, and their new product line is not out yet. So to implement MDT at this point in time, because the 911 system is in a flux towards next-gen 911, would, it would always be prudent to wait to see exactly when and how that's going to be implemented, because the entire system is going to change within the next five years.
Will it allow us to set up mobile, multiple, or multiple alarm assignments to a building? Will the system allow us to go in, and let's say there's a building that has, that needs more units to respond because it's, just has that type of, it needs more units to respond, can we set that in the system? Are we able to, when that call comes in for something, can we make it, set up the assignments?
I think what you're asking is, does it assign units based on the call or call?
No. Are we allowed, can we set up a multiple alarm assignment to a company? Let's say this company here produces something that will explode, and if we get a fire call, this, we can set this up to dispatch four trucks instead of one?
The CAD system has always had the capability to create what's called a run card, and in the run card, you define a PSAP or administrator with the help of the fire departments, in this case, since it would be a fire-related type incident. You define how you want to respond and the types of units, the number of units. It can also be vectored based on the community, and sometimes there are facilities that have unique apparatus that they only have one, and so that one would be tied to that type of event, and we call that a nature code. But that's always been the case in their CAD. Originally, when we did this almost 10 years ago, they didn't use any type function like that, but it's always been part of their CAD. And when you do an upgrade, one of the things that you look at and you go back and assess is, okay, are there any features that we already had that we didn't have a need for then, but we do now? And so you reassess that, and you implement that with the new upgrade.
Okay. Will it, will the system recommend the closest unit respond, or will that be, will that recommendation fall on the dispatcher? Or will the system be able to recognize which station, which EMS is nearest, and will recommend dispatch? Or will that?
Do that. That's part of what a run card is. It actually identifies the station, the apparatus, and in some cases, you could even identify the crew that's on that apparatus, and who's on duty, who's not on duty, and so forth.
Mr. Martin, is that going to be in our upgrade, those particular run cards?
Well, it'd just be a thing of having to program them.
Okay.
What we'll have to do is program them for What we'll have to do is program them through a road in Iredell County. So, it's a matter of having the personnel to do it with.
Will it communicate CAD to CAD to solve mutual aid problems with other counties?
The current product, again, is an open API. Our next-gen product will be CAD to CAD. That actual standard was just recommended by NINA sometime this past year. So, at this point, very few Cads can actually send data from one CAD to another CAD. And what we've seen is, even those Cads that have that ability, it's still somewhat proprietary in that they don't want to do that yet, until they're forced to. Because, you know, with our Web EOC product and our Web Fusion product, we can not only send it to the next county, to the state level, we can share it anywhere it needs to go. And our next-gen CAD, which is not a part of this CAD, but it is what's in the work, would be fully seamless integration.
So, then, would that be a no?
Our CAD, right now, has the ability.
What we are upgrading will not, but the next generation that could?
No, that's not what I said.
Okay.
Okay. What I said was, is we have the open API. It has the ability, if that other vendor opens their product up to let us.
Gotcha.
So, we do have that now.
I got you. And Mr. Martin, when I asked the question, would it recommend the closest unit, did you say that we would have to manually enter that data for every road in Iredell County?
Well, right now, what we do is we dispatch off what's called emergency service numbers. And each road is assigned an emergency service number. Those emergency service numbers now currently have up to three fire departments, the EMS station, the rescue squad station, and the law enforcement zone that's assigned to that ESN. The run cards would be virtually the same thing. We would have to go back and assign the units by street to the run cards. So, in other words, we would have to build a run card for each road, each street, in the county.
And again, that was in their CAD from the beginning, but they had never implemented that in Iredell County. So, that would have to be built from scratch. And basically, they're blank cards, and they just have to be filled in.
Will the times on the CAD be correct and in real time with the upgrade?
In reference to, currently, well, let me explain. Currently, the system is tied to a SpectraCom GPS clock, and we use PresentTense, which is NINA-approved software, to maintain the time on the CAD servers themselves. To my knowledge, the apparatus or any equipment in the field doesn't, is not tied into that. So, the county network, if it's using the county network, is not timed off of that same time clock. So, if they all ran off the same GPS clock, yes, they'd all be identical to the infinite tick of the clock. The SpectraCom clock is what's recommended by NINA, and it meets all those needs. So, if you don't have systems tied together, that's where you usually end up with time being different on one system compared to another system.
Okay. Will this system be able to track the apparatuses and where they are dispatched to? Or will that be up to the dispatcher to remember?
Do you mean like plotted on a map?
Let's say we dispatch truck four over here, and then another call comes in. Does the dispatcher have to remember that truck four has gone over here, or will it keep track of that apparatus? That we just, that's on the screen. Okay. How much will the new yearly support fee be? I see that, I was looking through the data, is it $9,000? $7,500 is our, will that be the maintenance cost every year and the support cost?
I don't have that paper in front of me. If you have the, normally, you break it down based on the system. There is a fee associated with the CAD system, and then there is a fee associated with the 911 telephone system, and the server equipment, and the computer hardware. So, the overall maintenance fee builds up from the individual components. So, I'd have to look at that figure again to be able to answer.
This year was $6,300 for that figure. I estimated it with the new equipment at $7,500. So, that's where that figure came from.
Yeah, I would say.
It could be, it could be more, it could be less. That's just an estimate.
No, it won't change from last year's figure. In fact, over the last five years, we haven't increased the actual maintenance fees. We've held them, or either reduced them because of the economy. And the only increase that we've written in is for travel expenses because of the cost of gasoline. So, that's one of the things that, I took over in 2007, and that was one of the things that I was very adamant about, that, you know, the maintenance was an adequate fee to begin with, and that, you know, we would hold it as long as we could until the economy picked up.
Mr. Martin, will our current system handle the upgrades without locking the system up if the call volume gets too high?
We're not currently having an issue with that, now that I'm aware of.
Okay.
I could talk to that. The implementation, because there's actually two projects at the same time, a normal change out of the hardware. And this CAD upgrade would be actually installed on the new hardware, and we would cut over. So, the old system would be completely separate from the new hardware that he's getting through state contract. So, there would be no interruption of the normal service, you know, to implement or cut over to the new CAD, or the upgraded CAD.
Mr. Martin, are there any other counties around us that are using this ESI system?
No, not currently.
Not currently? Are there any other in the state that are using it besides us? Besides us?
I don't know of any. Colwell was, but I think they switched.
Well, there were several. Colwell switched. The King Police Department was using it. I think it switched over to a different system as well. I'm trying to think. Yeah, that's the only one in the state of North Carolina.
Does any other agency in North Carolina use your equipment, sir?
Well, most people are familiar with Web EOC. That's our flagship product, and that's in most of the counties in the state of North Carolina and at the state level. It's used in every county in the state of South Carolina and at the state EOC. And you can visit our website. We've got a customer base that's worldwide.
Is Web EOC a CAD system, or is it a record management system?
It's neither. It's a crisis management system.
Crisis management.
And Web Fusion is the product that we use to tie all of them together. And so, each county can seamlessly send data from one point to the next. And that's the platform that we're building on for next-gen 911 and our next-gen CAD, because that's a proven technology that we have in place, and it works. That's kind of the bottom line on that.
If there's no other counties in the state using this, is it fair to say, then, that we might be a test site to see if this works, since there's no one else using it?
No. This is not a beta product. This is already proven software. It's, the first site that we did was in Aiken County, South Carolina, and they've been cut over, I want to say around the June timeframe of this year. But they too have been using our products for over 10 years. So, this is not a beta product, per se.
So, who are we going to come up with, the $95,000?
We have the $95,000 in the 911 funds currently, right?
If it's anybody, yes, sir.
And another system going to run us $500,000?
Five thirty-seven.
I have a price, please.
Is there some flexibility to, it's hard to test a system this massive and work out every bug in 15 days. Is there flexibility with the company to extend that time? I'm just thinking, a county our size, and with the call volume that we have, is it, is it reasonable to think that every bug could be identified in 15 days and worked out? Is there some flexibility? I know there's, they may need, they may have to talk to their board of directors to determine if that is an option, but.
What are you referring to?
Anytime you, anytime you upgrade anything, there's potential for things not to go right. And I'm just wondering if 15 days is an appropriate amount of time to make sure all the bugs are worked out before we have no option to say this is not working? Isn't that, I think I read that correctly, that we have a 15-day period?
Hmm, well, no, not really. If you can tell me what you're referring to.
I'm referring to, I believe, in the material presented to us, that we have a 15-day window to fix all bugs and find any problems. And then, at that point, there's no refund, or if we determine that this does not work for all the agencies involved.
You know what, you paid your own with that.
I'm looking, I'm sorry. I have the, I have it on my iPad. It might be in the.
Schedule is on page three.
All right, thank you. They're not impressed with my iPad skills right now.
Well, I can, I can talk to, to address what you're talking about. Basically, our process is, number one, we review the design, because we want to make sure that we're both on the same page. And if the county has certain requests or certain features that they need, then that's the time to identify that, so we can make the code to do that. And in this case, this is when we would look at the run cards. This would be the phase that we'd want to get all that data together and identify the people that have that knowledge now, because right now, they're relying, like you said earlier, they're relying on their own personal knowledge in many cases. And you just get that down on paper, and then we get it into the code. Now, once you've built that, then you've got to test it. Since this is already tested code, it's just a matter of us assembling all of that and loading it on the servers. And we do all that at our office. And we pre-test everything to make sure that the software doesn't lock up and those types of things. It's a normal process of software development. When we bring it to the site, then, and we install it, in this case, since it's not being loaded on the same equipment he has, we have a fresh bed that we just took from our test bed. We put it in the racks, and we let them essentially play with it to make sure it does everything that they needed to do, and that it, if any faults or any changes need to be, and it could be trivial, it could be, I like this color better than that color. You know, we make those type of adjustments. We also have a formal acceptance test document that we go through, and we check every item to make sure that it functions. You know, I push every button, I watch every screen, and so, and it's a yes, no, it did work or it didn't work. And so, before we actually go to the next phase, it has to pass that acceptance test. And we usually allow 14 days. If we run into issues that we think are significant, then we extend that, because we want to make sure that before we ever try to go live, that any bugs are addressed.
Is Aiken, South Carolina, the only county using your system?
I don't know. Right now, we still have Allendale County, South Carolina. We just cut over Barmel County, South Carolina. And in this case, they went to another CAD vendor because they also had them as their RMS vendor, and they refused to interface with us. And so, you know, and we have no issue with that. We understand that we don't sell an RMS system. We sell a CAD system. And if they are willing to interface with us, we are more than glad to work with them. But in this case, they wanted to sell them their product.
Ms. Griffin, can I ask you a question? You said, you questioned whether or not 14 days was adequate test time for Phase Three. Are you happy? Is there some number that you're looking for?
I'm just, I'm not sure, I'm not really looking for a number. I'm just asking, Mr. Martin, if he, if he feels that 14 days is a reasonable amount of time to make sure that the bugs are worked out in a.
Do you feel it's reasonable?
No.
Okay. What is reasonable?
At least, I would think 30 days.
Well, if you look down at the bottom.
What do you base that on?
Well, people have to be trained on the system, and then input from the calls going out to the people that are receiving calls, like our EMS, our sheriff, our fire, to make sure that it's all meshing well together.
Mr. Martin, 14 days, do we need, does that need to be increased?
I don't have a problem with increasing it. I think with going through the process.
I didn't ask you if you had a problem with increasing it. I asked you, do we need to?
I'm not, I'm certainly not trying to insult anyone's decision-making or intelligence.
Nobody being insulted here. You questioned, you brought up a point, which is, is 14 days enough time to debug it? Okay? So.
Well, may I?
So, I'm just trying, before we go to something else, I'd like to get that resolved. Is, you know, if, if he's saying he, I'm hearing Mr. Miller say 14 days is good, and I'm hearing you say you're uncomfortable with it, what number are you comfortable with, and why? And then, I want to know from Mr. Martin, does that number need to change? That's all I'm asking.
Well, actually, that's just part of the timeframe. If you see, there's another 30 days at the bottom, which is the overall acceptance testing. So, it's cumulative.
Forty-five days.
Right. So, you've got a total of 45 days. That can be adjusted as needed if we run into issues, because when we find, if it's a significant problem, we're actually going to stop the acceptance at that point. We're going to correct that. We're going to test it in our lab and find out why we didn't find it before we, you know, brought it to the site. And then, we're going to fix it, and then we're going to verify that it's fixed, and then we go back to that test. And we start that acceptance test from the beginning, because sometimes in complicated systems that are interrelated like this, you can't assume that you, because you made a change down here, it didn't affect something up there. So, we start from the beginning and start that process over.
That was my point.
And so, it is, it can be a long-drawn-out problem if you run into issues. And again, a lot of times, you don't always just find bugs or problems. It's just like, well, I like it better this way, or I think this would look better this way. And we try to accommodate the wishes of the county. Now, the other thing about this particular upgrade is that, in terms of the training and all of that, there's very little training that has to accomplish, because they already have our product, and this upgrade doesn't add that many different features. The field units are not affected, to my knowledge. Everything is internal to the ECOM. So, I really think it's going to be a kind of minor upgrade for the dispatchers themselves. It's all going to be in the background.
I have one more question. I have one more question. How much money is currently available to Iredell in our 911 funds?
Restricted, $195,000.
I've got a breakdown. If you'd like me to pass it on.
I have a breakdown as of, as of June the 30th. We had 1.1 million 66,000. And Susan can probably talk to this better than I. But when all is said and done, we had a budget and expenditure plan this year of $963,073.
Mr. Chairman, can I ask a question?
Sure.
I don't know if I'm in the dark or not, but it looks to me like that we've got a system here that Mr. Martin, Mr. Lael, and the county manager has all agreed upon. It must be okay. It's going to cost us less than $100,000. And are we considering another system if we don't take this one for $500,000? Is that what I'm looking at?
No.
No, there's no other system being recommended.
Well, I mean, what's all of the beef about? I mean, if Mr. Martin says it's okay, he's studied it, and county manager's okay, I mean, there must be some problems somewhere that I'm not aware of, or hadn't been told about.
Well.
I'm not trying to be flippant. I've been doing this a while, and every issue I've ever considered, there's been a divergence of opinion about. And some people have the opinion that perhaps we should go a different way.
There's been some question in some circles, this is a true CAD system, though. Is that what we're talking about here? I've heard it is a true CAD, and I've heard it's not a true CAD.
There's at least five governing agencies that say what a CAD is. So, the correct answer is, it depends on who you're listening to and who you ask. But not to be facetious, the basic purpose of a CAD is to. But not to be facetious, the basic purpose of a CAD is to, the CAD stands for computer aided dispatch. And our CAD was written to provide the ability to create calls for services, to dispatch units, and to keep up with all those times and run numbers. And so, we built all the pieces and modules that allow you to do that in a law enforcement environment, and in EMS environment, and in fire environment. Now, as CAD has progressed over the years, because when this first came out, Integraf, I think, was one of the first companies that had a, a real working CAD that was nationally recognized. And over the years, modules have been added. I recently looked at a RFP coming out of West Virginia, and they actually got it right. The NINA recommendation on what a CAD is, is, it's what most people go by. And our CAD meets all those basic recommendations. The add-ons, like MDT and AVL, that have come about over the recent years are just that. They're, they are interfaces to other people's products. We wrote our CAD to interface to anybody. And that was our basic design. You know, we came out of the EOC world, out of DOE, and we believe that there are experts in AVL, there are experts in mapping, and sometimes a county or an entity has a preference. They may want this particular brand of MDT, for instance. And we have no problem with them using that, and we'll interface with that. We like to tailor our products to allow you to implement your business process, and we don't like to force a set canned product on a county. So, we can make it work however it needs to. We built that into the software. You know, we, everything from the way the screens look to the way the process, the business process is implemented. So, we are very flexible in that, and that's, that's what we did for Iredell County is, when we built this almost ten years ago, we implemented their process. The CAD is to basically speed up and allow them not to miss steps in dispatching and taking care of the units. And so, again, we implement that process, not our process. So, it's very flexible. We can, we can make it do whatever it needs to do.
But i- if we put this in, then we will have the ability to interface with Firehouse software?
That's a, a custom module that is an add-on. The, the issue you have now, and the purpose of this particular upgrade, is because of the, the, the initial retirement of our product in favor of the Statesville PD's CAD system. And then when that didn't work out, basically, you were four years behind in upgrades. And, and that's really what this upgrade is designed to address. Right now, he can't add anything to his CAD because the software platform is no longer supported by its writers, and we can't add any more licenses. So, we couldn't write another custom interface right now to anything without at least doing that portion of the upgrade.
But the point I'm getting at is, if we do this upgrade, then the next step is, we can, this will be the platform upon which we can bring all these other interfaces into place, such as if you wanted to do AVL, you could do that. If you wanted to interface with warehouse software, you could do that. Are we going to be to that point?
And I provided that to David as, as, as part of the initial contact.
But, sir, that requires a yes or no answer.
That is a yes.
Okay, okay. All right. So, we, we get to that point. All right. Then, in the next budget year, if we wanted to do the next step where we had, it is the, the collective judgment of, of the Fire Chief Counsel, whatever, that Firehouse software is the way to go, and that's the one we're going to interface with. We, all we buy is the software to do that, and we're good to go then, right?
Yes.
Okay. You can elaborate, not ever answer a question.
Well, I have been told that I over-answer questions sometimes, so I, I do apologize for that. However, you know, there...
Not all of them have to be one or two, but not all of them have to be.
All right. There are, are specific options when you buy Firehouse software in particular. So, what we do in, in a case like this, you go out and buy the Firehouse, and that has its own implementation process. Once that's up and running, then they work with us. They say, okay, we have the system running, we're ready to, for, for you to interface with us. And then we work directly with Firehouse to create that, that piece. Now, it's already in place with, which side is that? Okay, yeah. Lexington County, South Carolina, is where we did the initial coding for that, and the initial beta testing and final testing for that. So, they have used that for several years. With any new software, if they, they make changes, then of course, we have to adjust our, our interface to, to take advantage of all those features that they have available. But yeah, that, that's the basic same type of interface that is, that has already been field-tested.
And did I, did you say that you guys were the system that we used to upgrade before, and it did not work? And then that was the system, the Sheriff's Department? It did not work?
The Spillman CAD was purchased by Statesville PD and, Sheriff Department, I'm sorry. And David could talk to this because it wa, we were notified that they were going to get the Spillman CAD, and that was attempted to be implemented, and they found that it, it didn't do what they needed it to do, and they asked us to retain. We had already sent them a, the new maintenance for the, the year, and it had completely taken our CAD system out of the picture.
So, it was not your system that they, that did not work?
No.
Okay.
In fact, they, they went back to our system because the new system wouldn't work.
Okay. If, if I understand this properly, though, it will take us to the step where we can begin to address, I guess you'd better say, some of the things that are not required but would certainly enhance the delivery of emergency services. But now, I, I sit with a laptop beside my mom's sick bed while she was sleeping this weekend, and I read more about this than, than I could understand. But my understanding is probably within the next five years, there's a next generation of CAD coming out, this, this is going to do away with all the current technology anyway as far as...
And that's what I was alluding to earlier. Our next-gen product is going to be based largely on our proven technology of Web EOC and Web Fusion. It will be a CAD system, and it will do all the things that our current CAD does, but be seamlessly integrated with Web EOC and Web Fusion. Because that platform already complies with everything that Next Gen is calling to do. The funding was just approved a couple of weeks ago through the FCC. We attended a webinar meeting that the FCC gave, and they're still calling from input from the telcos on how to deliver some of the things that they're mandating. And so, it's still very much in its design phase. And to be realistic, I don't think anybody could tell you that it's going to be available in five years. It's, it's kind of a shot in the dark right now because once they decide what they're going to build, then they got to fund it.
All right. Mr. Martin, if, if we buy all these upgrades and it does all these things, but we keep those modules locked and we never use them, it sounds like that's some of what we've done, that we've had the capacity to do some of the things, but we never did them. Is there a reason, if we buy a software that has the ability to do these things, we've paid for the upgrade to do it, that we wouldn't just naturally do it to make the job easier? Or would it make the job easier, some of these upgrades? And...
Well, I think the, the situation you're talking, speaking of here, basically, is for our field users. The Firehouse software, the AVL, all of that is for our field units.
And if they're the ones responding to the 911 call, then it should be geared to make it easier to do the job? If they're the ones that have got to go out and do the work, if we've got that ability, should we not use it?
The, I have to say, I think the telecommunicator is one of the largest keys in this.
They are.
And I don't, I don't think there's any technology that'll ever do away with the, the telecommunicator. And I'm proud of the staff that we have, and I think they do a fine job.
Absolutely.
And the reason we've never built the run cards out is because we've never saw the need. You know, we're, we're dispatching, we've got now to where it'll recommend up to three departments. The way the, the call comes in now, it recommends up to three departments. So, they, they have right off the, right off the top, a primary and two backup departments. So, you know, to go to the, to the, to the, the time and taking the time to do that, we just never saw that there was a benefit. Because, I mean, our, our telecommunications, I'll put them up against any in the state. You know, I can ask them now, off the top of their head, who would go? And it's, it's not hard, you know, when you learn the county. So, you know, if, if the technology's there, sure, we'll work on it.
But certainly don't want the technology to replace the human aspect of it. But it's wonderful when the technology works in cohesion with the human knowledge so that we can avoid errors and speed up delivery time, whatever we can do, so that when that call comes in and the people go out, we're just doing the most efficient job. And I'm certainly not recommending that we replace dispatchers or anything like that. But if we have the ability to integrate a computer software that could potentially make the job easier for our dispatchers, or verify what they are, what they know to be true, or correct maybe misknowledge, and we get the service on the end better, I think it's a win-win situation, and that's what we're all looking for, is a win-win situation.
Is that an upgrade you're wanting to add to this package?
No. But if I'm understanding correctly, some of these things have been on the system for years, and we've never utilized them. So, I'm, my question was, if they are there, why are we paying for upgrades if we already have things that we can utilize? And if we do the upgrade, we should utilize the functions that it has to make the job go smoother. I just hate to see us spend a hundred thousand dollars. We upgrade, we have these features and we don't use them, especially if it makes the job easier for everybody.
He hasn't used the run cards, my understanding, correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Martin, is because that is a very time-consuming and laborious task to manually enter each road in the county into a, a run card so you could tell who to dispatch by address.
Why doesn't the CAD system have that information in it for the county that they're going to implement it into?
Are you addressing that for me?
Yeah. I mean, why does the, why does our department have to do that? We're buying a system that's supposed to dispatch and, and...
Well, I want...
Why is the system not prepared to do that?
The system is prepared to do that. The county provides that information. And...
We don't have any way to download the information from the...
Mapping.
From mapping? We have to manually enter it in?
You have a separate vendor for your map.
And it won't interface?
Well, to a certain degree. If it, if the, if the data's provided to us, we can put it into the CAD. That's not an issue.
Okay. Let's, let's go, let's go back to the original thing. I think the decision we have to make is tonight, is are we going to spend ninety-some thousand dollars on an upgrade to a CAD that will give us the ability to interface with all of the other functions that some of our customers say that they want? I believe we're to the point where this upgrade will accomplish that. Now, there's going to be different opinions in this room as to whether that's, that's true or not. But at the end of the day, there is one man in this room that I personally, and this board, and the county manager, and the administrative staff in this county, holds responsible for the conduct of business in ECOM, and that gentleman's standing right there, and that's David Martin. Now, let's wrap this thing up and put a bow on it. And the question is, do we want to spend ninety-five thousand dollars for this upgrade, or do we not? Now, if we don't, we need to tell this man which direction we want to go. We want to tell him that we don't want to do this upgrade, that we're going to stay where we are for the time being, and to come back with another proposal. So, let, let's decide whether this ninety-some thousand dollars is worth the expenditure of money or not. And if it's not, then we're not going to decide on alternative tonight. That alternative is going to be decided on later. And it's going to require a lot more information than we have if we're going to talk, start talking about spending a half million dollars. And quite frankly, I didn't come here tonight to vote to spend a half million dollars. I came here to make a determination, based on what we have now and where we want to go, was ninety-five thousand dollars a reasonable amount of money to spend on a pathway to where we need to be.
Mr. Johnson, I'm not insinuating that we look at another product or that we vote on five hundred thousand dollars. But I think the questions that I ask are reasonable questions for spending a hundred thousand...
Well, I said nothing to insinuate anything of the kind.
Well, you told me to wrap it up and put a bow on it.
Well, let's do. I mean, for heaven's sake, it...
That's fine if you'd like to make a motion. You can make a motion.
You know, let me ask Mr. Martin one question. Mr. Martin, I mean, you've been there for a good while, standing there. How do you feel about what we're talking about doing? Do you feel good about the system we're talking about voting on now?
Yes, sir, I do. My, my recommendation is the upgrade.
Okay.
My second recommendation, if you don't do the upgrade, is to do nothing.
Okay. That's good enough, playing it up.
I hate to drag the one last thing I was asking about. Are you, because you asked a lot of questions, and we got a lot of answers. The only one that, that I heard that was, you didn't have a resolution on, was on, on that, on the debugging period, which was...
He indicated that there's a forty-to-five day...
So, you're okay with that now?
I'm okay with that answer, yes.
All right. All right. So, so you're good with this proposal as it's presented, without amendments to that?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Okay. Any other questions? Well, I'm going to make a motion. I'm going to make a motion, we approve this request for the expenditure of this money. An upgrade, ninety-five thousand, three hundred and twenty dollars, and a manual, annual maintenance estimated to be at seventy-five hundred dollars. Understanding the process of making that motion, I take some ownership in this matter. So, I've got a couple of requests. I'm going to ask that in the winter planning session, Mr. Martin come back to us and make a presentation and educate this board as exactly where we are on, I've got a pretty good understanding with this upgrade, where we're going to be on communication. And I would like to see a plan where, where we need to be over the next three or five years in communication. I would like to see a cost associated with those improvements in communication. You can do that on consultation with anybody at your disposal, Mr. Martin. But I, I do think there was a, a long time in, from the installation of this original CAD to this upgrade. And I think, quite frankly, I think that is some of the discontent involved. Now, I do know that the Spillman episode was a distraction, and, and that's, that's not anybody in this room's fault. It was sold for more than what it was. But I'm going to make that motion. I feel comfortable making that motion, that it will give us the ability to interface with the type of programs that these, these people who are customers are requiring. And I'm going to place that confidence in Mr. Martin, that he's going to be able to do that. Any discussion on that motion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed?
No.
Motion carries four one.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Next item is memo number seventeen, request for approval of September two thousand and eleven tax refunds and releases, and there are no county commissioners' names on these, on this list. And there are no county commissioners' names on these, on this list.
Okay, floor's open for a motion.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve, Vice Chairman Norman, all in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed, motion carries unanimously.
And the final is a request for approval of the October fourth, two thousand and eleven minutes.
Okay, floor's open for a motion.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve, the minutes, October fourth, two thousand and eleven, all in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Smith. We have announcements of vacancies occurring on boards and commissions. Crossroads Behavioral Healthcare Board of Directors, one announcement.
For Donna Dele to serve again, she's not back for now, is she?
Uh, no, but, uh, even if she does, I think we're gonna, we're gonna depart from our rules of procedure since this merger's going on and allow her to stay longer.
I wish you would, yeah.
Okay, the next one is Adult Care Home Community Advisory Committee, one announcement. Appointments to board and commissioners, local emergency planning committee, we have one appointment.
Mr. Chairman, move the table down.
Motion to table. All in favor, say aye.
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 Facilities Task Force for schools, we have six appointments, four from the community and two elected. So the floor's open for nominations. Let's begin with the, uh, two elected. Do we have two volunteers?
I believe that's chairman of the board.
It does, what did you read that?
Either that or Sinatra.
Huh? I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Okay, I guess that's me. Well... Well, I'm not gonna nominate myself, that's for sure.
Mr. Chairman, I nominate Stephen D. Johnson.
All right, who's our second one?
Chairman, I nominate Marvin Norman.
Marvin Norman, all right. Any other nominations? All right. There are no other nominations, I knew that we appoint these two gentlemen by acclamation. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, now, we have four from the community, and, uh, my prerogative, I'll go ahead and nominate one. I'd like to nominate Ms. Barbara Thorson. Worked with Ms. Thorson on the Recreation Advisory Committee for a number of years, and she's a fine lady. I think she'd do us a good job. Are there any other nominations?
I'd like to hold on, they said we're gonna do one for, they wanted, uh, quads to the county.
Mm-hmm.
Um, there were a couple...
She'd be from the north end.
I'm sorry?
She'd be from the north.
Okay, she'll be from the north. So I'd like to hold off on the Moores, hold one for now.
Okay, that's fine. Any other nominations?
West Tidy, I wanna hold up on that one, too.
Okay. If there's no other nominations, I'd move at this point we appoint Ms. Thorson by acclamation. All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed, motion carries unanimously. At this point, I'm gonna move that we postpone the Personnel Advisory Committee appointment. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, any unfinished business?
How about the Juvenile Crime Prevention Council?
Oh, we got the one on the reminder sheet.
Yes, sir. For the slot number seventeen, member of the business community, I have a gentleman that said he would serve.
Okay.
Terry Paget from, uh, he works up there at, uh, Bud's Old Harmony.
Okay, Mr. Terry Paget's been nominated, what was that for, the criminal...
Juvenile Crime Prevention Council.
Okay.
Needs someone, member of the business community.
Okay. And Terry Paget, you said?
Paget, yes, sir.
Okay. All right. Any other nominations? I move we close the floor nominations, appoint Mr. Paget by acclamation. All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Okay. Now, any unfinished business to come to our attention?
Mr. Chairman, I have a couple of updates under unfinished business from the last meeting. Put in front of you a memo from Joey Ruskowski, our planning director. And it's basically a, uh, some information on wood burning, or outdoor wood burning boilers that we, we heard about last, we heard two weeks ago. This is for information only, this is just the culmination of his research. And, uh, as expected, there's really very little, you know, that we can do under, uh, under our purview. But if you, if you have any questions about this, feel free to ask me or Joey, and we can follow up with you on that. And the second is, uh, the Josie Road violation that was brought up. Um, we did send out a notice of violation, that was a legitimate zoning violation, and we're in the process of trying to get that cleaned up. And that was the twelve or so cars up on Josie Road, among other things, apparently.
Okay. All right. Any other unfinished business, public comment period? Any new business? County managers' report.
I've got a new business slash county managers' report, I'll do that.
Okay.
Uh, second thing that I gave you, it was a, it's a spreadsheet. We are in the process, or the, the Lake Norman RPO is in the process of doing their priority rankings for our, our transportation needs within the county and in the four, four county region, uh, that comprises the Lake Norman RPO. The list that you have in front of you is what is being proposed by their TCC, which is their Technical Coordinating Committee. This is being proposed to their TAC, which is the Technical Advisory Committee. The coordinating committee is staffers, basically. Advisory committee is elected officials. And Mr. Norman is our, our representative, and Mr. Robertson is our alternate. There, there's soliciting input, and I thought this would be a good way to give you the opportunity just to take a look at these. And what I've done is, you have a list of what the projects are, and then, at the top of the, uh, going out through the columns, what the, when the project was ranked, two thousand and eleven, oh nine, seven, on down to oh three, and what it was ranked. Over the next two weeks, I, I would ask that if you have any comments on the priorities that are listed under the two thousand and eleven ranking, just get those back to me if you would. If you have no comments, that's fine. Uh, but we'd like to present those to, uh, to the TAC in mid-November. So if you have any comments, just please let me know. And if, and if it seems like this is, uh, if there's, the, the comments are not along the same lines, I'll bring, bring it back up to the board and we can discuss it further.
So when it says I-77 from Mecklenburg County to US 21, are they talking about repaving, or resurfacing, or widening?
That'd be a widening project. And, and that's a good question. I would assume, generally speaking, that if it's not stated, if, if you have a question like that, it's generally gonna be a widening process, project. Any further questions on that item? And as far as the county managers' report, um, the second, the last handout I have for you tonight is a, uh, it's a financial update. Chairman Johnson had, had asked at, at an earlier point to, uh, at some point in the fall, give an update on where we are financially. And we have a quarter behind us. And what we've tried to do is show, uh, numbers back to fiscal year oh nine and compare them to where we are now for the first, first quarter of each of those fiscal years. And we have revenues and we have expenditures. I would not put a ton of emphasis on the ad verum tax collections at this point because we just have not hit the, the heavy season yet, although we are at sixteen percent. And I will point out, from a revenue side, even the development departments, you can see that they are pretty high, uh, in comparison to what they were, uh, last year and over the last few years. So I think that's a good sign. I don't know what that means as far as the trends. Uh, once we get to about December, uh, you know, development obviously slows down for the weather, and, and we'll see a decline, I'm sure. But some of the, the preliminary, uh, numbers in planning, especially in erosion control, are fairly high. So those are, those are good indicators. From an expenditures side, uh, also, uh, if you look at the last column, basically we want to be twenty-five percent or lower, or around twenty-five percent or lower. And as you can see, you know, most of our departments, except for one, uh, at least in the categories that we're showing, are lower than that twenty-five percent. So this doesn't include capital projects, uh, at, at this point. But we don't have, you know, real significant, high, high-money capital projects that we're looking at. So, uh, hopefully we'll be able to continue these trends. So, um, if you have any questions about this, as you're reviewing it, please feel free to call me or Susan. Uh, and I thank Susan for, uh, putting this together for us.
Well, thank you, Mr. Smith, I appreciate that. We, we've some, seen some increases, but we've got a long way to go. Okay. This time I offer a motion to go into closed session for economic development under General Statute one forty-three, three eighteen, eleven, A four, Attorney Client, General Statute one forty-three, three eighteen, eleven, A three, and Property Acquisition, General Statute one forty-three, three eighteen, eleven, A five. All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed, motion carries unanimously.
Okay, as a result of the closed hearing, there will be action taken on three matters. First of all, I'd like to offer a motion that would call for a public hearing on November the first, two thousand and eleven, at seven p.m. regarding the economic development incentive of between seventy-seven thousand six hundred up to one hundred and ninety-four thousand dollars over a five-year period for the Carolina Beverage Company, based on an investment of between four million to eight million dollars. That's a motion. Any discussion? All in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. All right. Second motion I'd like to offer is to lower the investment amount regarding the Lombardi Company Economic Development Incentive from four million dollars investment to three point four million dollars. Any discussion on that motion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. And thirdly, I'd like to offer a motion to lower the investment amount regarding the Carolina Beer and Beverage Economic Development Incentive from ten million dollars to nine million five hundred and twenty-four thousand dollars, and to approve the improvement period from September two thousand and eight to December two thousand and ten. Any discussion on that motion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. If there's no other matters to come to our attention, I'll offer a motion to adjourn. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously.